Good morning, everyone. I'm calling this meeting of the Board of Trustees and the Alabama Community College System to Order. We appreciate everyone's presence. Thank you for your interest in the workings of our system. We appreciate what everyone does that's such an important part of our system. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Martha Lavender that's going to give our invitations.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I want to remind you that this is a day that the Lord has made. It's a gift and it's an opportunity. So if you will bow your heads now and let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, I too look around this room and I see individuals that are interested in what happens in our state and what happens to the people in our state. But Father, these individuals are interested in what's happening to your people because that's who we are. As I listen to Chancellor Baker this morning talk about the students that we serve and the majority of them and the needs that they have, I'm reminded of the words of Jeremiah, that you have plans for all of us, plans that are good, plans to prosper us. And so, Father, we come to you with open minds, hearts and spirits and dedicate ourselves to the work that you have laid out before us in the Alabama Community College System, not only as we interact professionally with our students and our community leaders, but also, Father, as we fulfill the personal needs that you have for us to dedicate ourselves to each other as your children. And so today, Lord, I ask that you bless the members of our Board of Trustees who put in countless volunteer hours to advance higher ed in the state as we really look to make decisions that make a difference, Father, in the lives of your people. Father, I also want to thank you for our staff that are so dedicated to what we do and for every person in this room who works to do things that are pleasing in your side. So, Father, today I'll tell you, we're going to continue to fight, we are going to continue to run the race, and we're going to keep the faith to do your will. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Davis, item four. Chair of the Board, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I implore the Chairman of the Board of Trustees to approve the agenda as amended. Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Item five, approval of amendments due by 12/2017 meeting. All Board members who receive these minutes and have a chance to flip them over. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion to the President.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any changes to the minutes in discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 12/2017 meeting, if it's signified by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. Moving into our action items. Item seven, academic and student affairs, adult education facilities, physical information technologies, workforce development. Item seven, A1, is a salary schedule for 2017-2018 by the Alabama Community College System. This item is all the others on last month's work session. The Board members have a chance to review this, review the discussions on this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis to approve this as salary schedules, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 salary schedule, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, executive legal and public information action items. Item eight, A1, is a renewal of the lease agreement between Enterprise State Community College and South Alabama Regional Highway Safety. This was on our work session last month. Is there a motion to approve this? Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Second by Mr. McAnally. Any further discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 salary schedule, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Items two and three are leases between Gas and State and other parties, but we will take these separately. Item two is a lease agreement with the Alabama Department of Labor and Gas and State. Is there a motion? Is there a motion approved by Mr. Davis? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? This was on the work session agenda. If we give this thoroughly. If there being none, move to vote. On the lease agreement between Alabama Department of Labor and Gas and State Community College, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A3, is an amendment to the lease that exists between Gas and State Community College and the city of Gas. Correct, correctional figures. Once again, this was on the work session. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Caldwell, is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 salary schedule, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A4, is a lease agreement between Bishop State Community College and Nobville County. This is for a new site for Bishop State. Once again, this was on our work session last month. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any further discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A5, six and seven are additions to our policies. These were discussed at the work session and have been approved, the policy continued. Mr. McAnally, there's no objection. You'll have to entertain a motion to maybe approve all three of these additions in one motion. Is that satisfactory?
Absolutely. I stand with you.
Very good. Motion by Mr. McAnally to approve items eight, A5, six and seven, which is adoption of the series 700 policies. The adoption or proposed policy 603.02 concerning summer employment with salary scheduled D employees and revised policy 500.01, use of college facilities. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion by the Board? Here being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the policy recommendations and changes for 700 series, 603.02, 500.01, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Items five, six and seven. Item eight, A8, is approval of reduction in forced policy guidelines for Northwest Shoals Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of seeing five, raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Chancellor's recommendation, Matthew D Rogers, permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion by the Board? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of seeing five, raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. If there being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 lease agreement, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Question carries. Item nine, personnel. Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Several weeks ago, the Board of Trustees have talked, worked, toward filling the vacant positions. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the community. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public community. I would recommend that Matthew D Rogers, who is permanent, should serve as a replacement for the president of Enterprise State Community College. Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Is there a recommendation? For Matthew D Rogers, known permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, is there a motion for him?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but we accept the Chancellor's recommendation, Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Is there a recommendation? We'll allow entertain a motion to maybe approve all three of these additions in one motion. Is that satisfactory?
Absolutely. I stand with you.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Van Troy to approve items eight, A5, six, and seven, which is adoption of the Series 700 policies. The adoption or proposed policy 603.02 concerning summer employment with salary schedule of the employees and revised policy 500.01, use of college facilities. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Here being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the policy recommendations and changes for the 700 Series, 603.02, and 500.01, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Items five, six, and seven. Item eight, A8 is approval of reduction in forced policy guidelines for Northwest Shoals Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Select. Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. Once again, this was on the work session agenda. We also, very similar to the policy change we had agreed earlier for one of the other community colleges. There being no discussion, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, personnel. Mr. Chairman, several weeks ago, as the Board of Trustees have talked, worked toward filling the vacancies. Last month, we placed two permanent residents in the building. I'd like to recommend that we place a permanent resident in our public college. I would recommend that Matthew D. Rogers, who is permanent, have served his place last year. Is there a recommendation for Matthew D. Rogers, a permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College? Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a mention before you accept the chances of recommendation of Mr. Rogers as president of Enterprise State Community College.
Motion by Mr. Van Troy. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Foray. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Chancellor's recommendation, Matthew D. Rogers, a permanent resident at Enterprise State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? If you're unanimous, raise your hands. Let me, before we talk, let me say this. In the process, we met with two different committees, made up of people across the community in that area, including our partners, other parts of the community. We approved the whole selection process and posted it appropriately. And it ended up, the final process was covered on two of our boards, along with our executives saying, conducting that meeting with Mr. Rogers. We came out with this recommendation and we're excited about it.
I am excited and humbled, ladies and gentlemen, to have this opportunity to serve the community that I love and call home, Enterprise Alabama and the surrounding areas. Thank you Chancellor Baker, Chairman of the Board of Trustees. I certainly appreciate the confidence that you have placed in me to lead this wonderful institution, Enterprise State Community College. I look forward to working with each of you to make Enterprise State Community College a positive learning experience for our students and our residents. It's our goal to ensure that ESCC is vital, a thriving community college and academic institution that prepares our graduates, allows our residents to come back regardless of their path, whether they're getting a certificate, a license, working towards an associate degree, transferring to a four-year college, or coming back and be retrained for a job. It's our mission, and we'll be from day one, to provide the best possible experience for our students and our residents. We want these students to have a positive experience at ESCC and help them to become successful long after their coursework. We can look at graduation rates, but the true definition of a successful institution is the success that the students have after their graduation, and we certainly want to provide that. I want to recognize my wife Stacy, who is with me today. Thank you for being here. My son Liam, second day at school, we got him out, so I don't tell anybody. Glad these two guys are here. My mother Linda is here with me as well, my brother JP and Keely, his wife. Several friends are here. I'm delighted to have three superintendents that I've worked for, past and my current superintendent, Mr. Greg Falk. That speaks highly of you individuals. We just started school a couple days ago, to be here on a very busy time of the year and for them to make the drive up today, I'm honored, gentlemen. I want to say this to Mr. Falk and to the other superintendents and principals in our service area. I look forward to working with you. I think there's some wonderful opportunities that we can partner and share in and create just wonderful experiences for our students if we work together. And I look forward to doing that, getting started, and meeting the Enterprise State Community College faculty and staff and getting to work. Thank you for this opportunity and honor. Thank you.
Greg, you come up and, yeah, you were hiding. Eric, Eric, Eric is the executive officer of Public Relations in charge of the superintendent organization. And I've been talking with Eric about what we can do as a community college system, working with school districts in our service areas and various colleges to create a seamless pipeline so that we start putting information earlier and earlier into the high schools, the middle school, or junior high, whichever grade it is, and start an education program early about opportunity. Jim has, is a dream and do it program that we've been implementing so that people can have access early about careers and what it takes to be successful in a career and what you can expect out of that career. And I'm just excited the colors we're going to make, the model in the enterprise community. Know what can be done with education. And in times when there is so much controversy about education in the state of Alabama, we can hold a light and say, hey, folks, we have good answers and we're moving forward. This would be an example. And we have other presidents around the state that are already working on this as well. We did something in the office, and we have a cooperative trustee who is helping us get those things done. But I just think there's a great future in cooperating together and being able to help the students and the parents of the community. So I want to thank these gentlemen for their willingness to listen to me. Thank you. Any comments for the board?
I'd like to make a comment. This excites me coming, you know, the way you're tied in K-12 being a community college. This is going to be good for everybody involved, you know, just even all the way down to junior and I like to say. And it's a great recruiting team. You know, they'll know what's on and the connections will be there. It's just a, it's a good, good day. I tell you, I like this idea.
Chancellor, I just compliment you on working for better communication between us and K-12. Speaking of your board, it's an honor for us to have you superintendents here today, especially Eric Mackey at the State Superintendents Association. They do fine work, but I'll tell you, there's hardly a tougher job in the state of Alabama than being a superintendent and stewardess. And even though you get a lot of recognition, it's still underappreciated. I have to tell you, but as a board, we want to do whatever we can to work with you, to work with K-12, because now we're supplies with our students and we're just, it's just so important. We reach the masses in secondary education and post-secondary rather. And so I just thank you for your support and I'm just looking forward to working with all of it. Thank you, Chancellor.
I'd like to. Rachel, do you stand? Rachel Adams, this, first of this month, K-12. Rachel has a background in communication, art, and personal public relations. You know, we've kind of struggled around this building for a while getting the message out, and we're beginning to really get serious about it. Rachel has her academic degree is in public relations. They did like a lot of occasions. But we're excited about having someone on board to help keep the public aware and make the public aware of what we do in our schools and manage us through some of the paths where we need special praise. You know, we have had a few occasions where we've been good to have someone with our concerns and say, how do we handle this issue? So we're excited to have Rachel on board. She works for Boone. Boone's kind of becoming a jack of all trades. But it takes that to be a political, so, well, he's not a consultant, he's an employee, but he's my consultant. Clyde, Clyde here, Clyde Hancock, addition to the public relations office. Clyde's background is in graphic design, and he will bring quality and the presentation experience that we need telling our story. So we're excited to have him. And then we have a new staff member in workforce. Kim, do you want to introduce her? I'll let you do it.
Natalie, can you find this in here? This is Natalie. She's joined our team. She's our assistant CTE director. She comes from Florida with one of your experience. I'm glad that she's here.
Well, I had a press meeting this morning at eight thirty. I mean, it ain't complaining that we had earlier, but we've got a fairly full day until a little bit, so we have some things to cover. And I don't intend to expand on this, I just wanted you to know, we discussed beautiful guidelines and how we're going to amend those, because it's my position, I want the president of the college to be responsible for running the college. I can't second yes every other, every minute, but by making them responsible, then we're going to hold responsible. And you have already done a 100% evaluation program, so I think we're in a good position to evaluate as we go along. But I spend a good deal of my time, as does my staff, good deal of time signing documents that I have outsourced in no time. And we're trying to get that off the table and give the presidents the authority they need to do. We were talking at some later about the ERP we have received. He's hiding it back. He mentioned ERP, mentioned around president, and he gets, gets nervous and hiding it. But no, I'm kidding you, but we have, we received five bids. Some of them are as much as, how many pages, Brian?
Chancellor, we've had some proposals as much as 500 pages. All the proposals were at least two hundred. A lot of it.
There's a lot of sifting through information before we really even understand what we are seeing, but just as a matter of reporting. Our committee on college readiness, reassessing the assessment process, and students come to us about the media issue. And we have a representative working on our committee, along with the state of education system. And that community gave reporting to us, which we have a group of presidents that are working on that. I come to base funding, as you know, two of our board members are serving on that committee meeting the first time this afternoon. And we have been working with a group of presidents to begin to look at and address our come base funding. And then we are diligently working on developing a policy for the board to adopt when it can to substitute a program that is more collegiate in nature that addresses issues of contingent service status or whatever that they do. For the board to adopt that policy and not be governed by students for a time, before anybody takes that decision and gets all nervous, we're not taking anyone's rights away from the reactive grandfather system. As we go forward, we feel like that colleges need to be confident in promoting and dealing with their employees in a more collegiate way than we've ever been. And we've also talked about a statewide workforce plan. I have been pretty open in my conversations around the state about the need to develop a statewide workforce plan. Number one, we have very limited monies for the state as a total to provide its field workforce training. What we have, what is happening, it seems that everybody wants to be in on the plan as long as they can get their hands on money. My education is advocate of having a single plan statewide and identify the deliverance of particular systems of training so that we don't have systems being replicated around the state by entities that have no legal responsibilities. So we are addressing that issue. I met with Secretary of Commerce, I have a meeting this afternoon with the president of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, the Chairman of the Department of Education on Education, to discuss that very issue of the Secretary of Commerce. So those are some of the issues, just to keep you aware that we're trying to keep the presidents busy. And I think they were, they were staying extremely busy and efficient. Of course, it's kind of wishful thinking. Very good. Any comments for the board? Thank you for that support, Chancellor. We'll meet again for our work session here in this room at 1:00 PM this afternoon. Our next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be September 6, 10:00 AM. There being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Stand in turn.